And we can start, right? Everybody here?
So that was all of us unmuting ourselves? Sorry, Dory.
Yes, all of you unmute yourselves, take roll call and then I will mute everyone except for Dr. Grasha opening the meeting.
Okay, hear that, everybody? Okay, so I will call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Director Sewell.
Here.
Director Martin.
Here.
Director Grasha.
Here.
Director President Duncan.
Here.
And President Wright.
Here.
Thank you, we have form.
Thank you. Do we have a flag, flag of protest?
For today or for Monday?
Oh, that's right, today's Thursday.
We usually do that on Monday.
I know. Okay, employee recognition. Well, this year we only have one, one in the month of June, a one year or two. Michael Moore. And to, oh no, excuse me, public input. Do we have any public?
I have Ashley from DWA on the line. Ashley, do you wish to speak?
No, thank you, Dory.
Thank you, Ashley.
Hi, Ashley. Welcome.
Hello, thank you.
Okay, so item number six, first amendment to contract agreement with R and R Waterproofing, Inc., general manager.
Okay, thank you, President Wright. The first one today is the item on the agenda where I asked for forgiveness. I had to make a decision. We needed, we had the contractors here to complete the roof, which needed to be completed before we could get started on the restrooms. We needed the restrooms in place in order for us to do the first reentry. So we, Danny came in and asked me and I said, yes, absolutely, per the board direction. I approved the contract to let them go ahead. However, by doing so, that change order ended up being $1,230.10 over the, the contract price and what we took to you before. So I'm asking you today to basically approve that with the increase. And that's about the end of the story, but I'll let, I'll let Danny share with you what was done. We do have a new roof and, and it feels good. I can be, my pale. Or plural, pales. Danny, did you want to explain some more with that? Because it also includes a gutter and Danny will get into that.
Yeah, he's muted.
Thanks, Dory. I, no, I, I was waiting for Dory. I was waiting for that prompt I saw. Thank you, Arden. Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. Just fill in a few blanks, a couple of pieces for, for Arden. As he stated, this contract was approved by the Board of Directors. We went over the, the contingency amount by $1,210, $1,230.10. We did use a portion of the contingency to take care of some asbestos mitigation up there with the mastic they used to adhere the old roof. We had some other areas of some patching work that weren't evident until we actually removed some of the existing. So, great job, they did it. It was a little loud. There were some complaints about the noise. Jokingly, we said, next time there'll be quiet hammers, but we were fortunate enough to be able to still get through a day productively. And the, the job turned out nice and quick. We are now repaired. They did a extensive water test, longer than what was required. Flooded the roof, did a sprinkler test and so far, everything has been perfect. Where, where this project went over the $1,230 is advice. We have several areas of, we had more areas of missing gutter than we had of actual functional gutter. So they came in and redid the gutter system so that we could control that flow of water also near the, the footings of our building. So that's what this work was for. The work is complete and as Arden said, we're happy with the end product. We happy to answer any questions if there are any questions.
I can't see everybody. So Randy or Ivan? Oh, I see, Steve's got his hand.
Yeah. Oh, there you are. Okay, good. Yeah, when you said the work is complete, is that the whole project, the, the, all the repairs and the bathrooms, everything is done?
Separate contracts, Director Grasha. This, the scope of this contract, yes, the, the bathrooms are done, separate contract.
Right.
And if you're referring to the interior ceiling, let me see if I can help you out here.
Oh.
You see my wall there? The interiors, this is, I'm pointing it up, but I think my wall was just, that was not part of this. I will, I will say though, the interior work that was done in the restrooms, we've done a, a small little change order to come in and do insulation. We're not going to replace the drywall, but we are going to insulate. There's been some discussion on how we could mitigate any of the noises that we have coming. Mainly how we can go face that air conditioning from cycling on as much as it is right now. So separate contracts, but that does not, it's not part of the same.
When you say you're not going to do the drywall, is that ever? What do you mean by that?
Well, the cost is anywhere from $70,000 to $90,000. And when we did the initial appraisal of this building for the purpose of looking at for sale for the bill, the building, the appraiser said, appraiser said that you're not going to see any added value by doing that. The thing is likely tenant improvements where they tear a majority of the interior walls down just to go ahead and have it suitable for whatever their need is. So they would advise that we didn't, that we did not build or improve that.
That could be years.
I was going to say, I, I'm not sure that's a way you're going to want to live with that. Even, even if it was my own building and I had people in there, I'd want it to be hospitable to the soul and those holes in the wall. It's up to you guys. It's, but I'd want the building finished and look finished and feel finished and a place that people can be proud to work and people that might apply for employment might be proud to work at as well until the day comes when we can decide, make a final decision on, on, on a new building. I can't imagine leaving drywall unfinished. Is it $70,000 to complete the drywall?
Roughly. There's been a couple of preliminary numbers, Director Grasha, anywhere from 70 to 90 until we actually bid it.
Well, you know, I don't, I don't want to speak too far out of turn here, but I can't imagine not completing that work. I, I, I can, you know, and almost every scenario that I have, that building continues to be useful to the district, even if it's just as a payment center down the road. So it's up to the board or you guys, but I'd, I'd want that finished myself. I can't imagine leaving a drywall out.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about it sometime myself. So in the future, we'll see how the money goes with, with the COVID going on and all that kind of stuff. But Steve might have a point there. So anyway, Ivan, did you want to say anything? I see you now. No comment, no question on this one. Randy, I can't see you, but did you have any comments on this one? Is he there?
He does not.
Oh, he's not here?
He's here. He, he said he was good. Yeah.
Oh. Okay.
President, if I may, certainly I'll talk with the general manager about this, but again, we can, at the direction, we can revisit anything that you'd like to revisit. When we started to repair the roof, it was, it was a consensus of, I believe, to, to not do it. If there's been a change of, and some consideration, we'll certainly bring that back to the board and move forward with any type of bid process. So Arden, is there, is there anything you'd like me to conclude?
No, no, that's, that we will do, we'll do what the board directs us to do. Absolutely.
I think we should, anyway, as a board, maybe on their next agenda or something.
Well, yeah, we will be bringing forward the work that we're, we've started on the new building. We're gonna, we, you know, we've started to work on that again. And as soon as we get something prepared, we can bring that back to the board and, and we can take a look at, at repairing this, this, the interior walls here, if that's what you want. We'll, we'll do anything you want to do.
And the time, the timing, I think the timeline is probably very important. It was just a short period of time, no problem, but it, to me, it seems like it might be a whole lot longer than that. It's, it's the pace we've been going. Anyway, we can talk.
At least here.
Right, so no other, if nobody has the other comments or questions on six, we'll move on to number seven. Professional service contract agreement versus Drew Devan, emergency management consulting. Arden?
Yes, okay. Again, Danny can, can provide you with some details, but essentially we did get a, as you see, we did get the grant. And with this pandemic, I think everybody realizes the importance of being prepared for emergencies. And this is one of the things that we need to do. Mr. Sternivan is the one that, that helps us with, you know, much of our emergency preparedness and he's enjoyable to work with. And he, and we need to develop a hazard mitigation plan. And we, thanks to Danny and his staff, we did, we did procure a, a grant for that, 75% grant. So we wanted to move forward with that and what you're doing today is allowing us to move forward with that. We, the cost is, as you see, eighty, to us will be around $8,750. Did you want to add anything, Danny, to that? It's pretty straightforward.
Arden, I'm happy to put the background, what the hazard mitigation plan is, why we're doing.
Why don't you do that? That's good. Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
If we all remember back in July of 2019, we, staff asked the board for, I'm not sure you guys can hear that, but that's a little background, I apologize. Staff asked the board to authorize the, through a resolution, authorize the general manager is the, is the authorized agent for a California Office of Emergency Services Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And we did so and submitted a application on the district's behalf. As Arden said, Gary Sternivan helped us out with that free charge. He is, if you may recall, has done the, it's the training for board members, has done training for staff members and been doing additional tabletop exercises for us. That's 7525, we, we actually were approved in April of this year for $8,750 of match fund for $2,600 and $250 of grant funding. $35,000 is what it will cost us to put together a mitigation plan. The request today is also to augment the capital budget for $43,750. There's contract management, there's actual administrative time that goes with, with that. That's all, that's all part of the capital cost. What is the plan? Let's see, what, why are we doing a plan? In accordance with Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, if you want to be eligible for any pre or post disaster funding, you have to have a hazard mitigation plan. And what that does is identifies natural hazards and affects the district, like affect the district's infrastructure, flooding, earthquake, wind, heat, extreme heat, all your natural causes, how these could, how these can cause major or minor damage to district infrastructure. This will tell us, what we identify will also have mitigation for those, those items. And the, fast forward, we, we have a plan. If there's items that we want to identify, say for example, pre-disaster, and an example that I could think about is right before I, I hired on with the district in 95, there was a storm happening in the north end of the district in the mountain area above the, what we call Annandale Reservoir. It had been raining for, for some time, flash flooding and that canyon had flooded, brought everything along with it. And for those that know where Lost Heads, the rehabilitation centers, it had come through there, wiped out part of the building, wiped out so much subsurface like septic tanks and placed it all around the outside of the Annandale Reservoir, right up close to the top of that reservoir. So get past all the cleanup work and we're back in the normal operation. What we had done is we had constructed an underground wall in a sense that in the future that it ever happens, that wall would deflect that, take it on down and not impact our infrastructure. That's an example of pre, pre-disaster where we could submit that for FEMA funds with our hazard mitigation and be qualified or actually meet the criteria to get funding for that. So the post, of course, if we identify and we need to mitigate post, post disaster, we also are going to be eligible for that. So I, I guess in a nutshell, that's the, that's the back, the background and the history and where we are today. So again, we're asking the board to, the contract amount, the $35,000 actually is within the general manager's approval limit, but it just makes sense to be able to tell the story, put that as part of this, the real ask, which is asking for augmentation of the capital budget. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are, if there are any.
Any questions from the board? I didn't have to speak up. Steve, I can, he's the only one I can see, besides Ivan. Did you, looks like he has a question. Okay, you're unmuted, Steve.
The, you said that this is a requirement to apply for federal aid in the case of a natural disaster? Or is that, is that what we're, why we're doing this? We wouldn't otherwise be eligible? What, what, what did I pick up there when you were talking about that?
Correct. In order to have what they would call like Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funding, separate from what the, the funding that we received for preparing and developing our hazard mitigation plan, there's other funding out there to address pre-mitigation or pre-disaster mitigation and post. So in order to be eligible for that funding, you have to have a hazard mitigation plan. So because we were able to essentially prepare a hazard mitigation plan with 20, 75% grant funding, it was in our best interest to move forward with this effort.
It, just to, to add to what Danny's saying, I mean, it is good for us to have a hazard mitigation plan as part of our emergency preparedness program.
So. It's also good to get a 75% grant for it.
Get a 75% grant and it makes us eligible for FEMA funding.
Perfect, thanks, guys. Okay, I don't, anybody else have any comments? Oh, Danny, you're going in and out. You're kind of fading it. You're.
I know, you know, I, I want to turn my video off because I believe we might have a lot of streaming happen on this end of the building. But my question, Madam President, is Director Grasha, was I able to answer your question? He's muted.
No, he's not. Did you say yes?
Yes, I got it.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go on to item number eight, Resolution 2020-17, amending Resolution 2020-06, adding rule 22 hours of work overtime, compensatory, compensatory time, compensatory time and standby time and other minor revisions to Mission Springs Water District personnel rules and regulations. Arden, we talked about this one at budget.
Yes, we did. This is what you approved in the budget process as part of your negotiation with the employees. This was the one thing you agreed to in those negotiations. It's really of no financial impact to us. It allows employees to basically accrue up to 40 hours of compensatory time rather than, and in lieu of overtime pay. So I'll let Brian elaborate on that. And we, but in order to do that, we had to, through a resolution, amend rule 22. So Brian, do you want to add to that?
Actually, General Manager, I would ask that our human resources specialist continue with this item. She, she's most familiar with some of the things that we've done and how we came up with the modifications to the ordinance, or excuse me, to the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam President and members of the board. Back in March, we brought to you a revised version of the employee handbook that included major updates. And then shortly thereafter, we brought to you employees' ideas and inquiries for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year that included a compensatory time option. At that time, you instructed us to move forward with drafting language that would allow non-exempt employees to accrue up to 40 hours of compensatory time in lieu of overtime pay. This is what we are bringing to you today in addition to some minor reference and page updates. This resolution, which has been reviewed by LBO, provides language which defines the compensatory time and the parameters for accrual and usage in accordance with applicable laws. Some of the guidelines include compensatory time calculated at the rate of one and a half hours of compensatory time for every hour of overtime work. A maximum of 40 hours of compensatory time will be accumulated at any given time. Compensatory time will be paid at the end of the fiscal year in which it is earned and open termination as overtime at the employee's regular pay. And lastly, compensatory time may be accrued and used only with prior approval from supervisors and as long as it does not unduly disrupt the district's operations. So this is what you have in front of you. Do you have any questions?
Anybody questions, board members? I don't see.
Randy.
Yeah.
Okay, Randy.
Did I understand you right? It's, if somebody works an hour overtime, which is equal to time and a half, they get an hour and a half. So that's, that's a fair swap there. Did I understand you right? If they sell it back or if they terminate or whatever, it's at regular time, not time and a half?
It would be paid at regular rate, however, it will be accumulated at time and a half. So in the books, it will.
Okay, okay. So, so for an hour and a half would be paid at the regular time, which is still an hour and a half, the same as an hour, an hour overtime. Okay, all right. All right, that works. Nice background, Danny.
Thank you, Oriana.
Thank you.
Okay, number nine, the consent agenda. I, I'll ask, but I don't think anybody have anything to pull off the consent agenda. Hearing none, then we will vote on the consent agenda on Monday. Financial report. Arden, who's, Matt, where are you, Matt? There you are.
If you.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. Like to give a brief financial summary of the 11 months ended May 31st, 2020. Operations and revenues and expenses tracked through those 11 months as expected. And as we discussed in, in prior board meetings, on the summary page, a couple of highlights, the operating revenues are tracking 4%, within 4% of budget, so very close to budget. Operating expenses are tracking 9% less than budget. Investment returns are still positive. I happened to have a board meeting with Cal Trust earlier this week and we discussed current market conditions with BlackRock and actually even are implementing what we call fee waivers where even though the investments within our funds could possibly go less than zero, the Cal Trust will start at certain points to waive their administrative fees for those funds to help offset some of those investment returns when they get such small numbers. So that will help us to lengthen the amount of time that we can maintain positive returns and obviously maintain our principal within our investments. So with a little insight on what's going on with the market, even in this current COVID pandemic situation. If you notice about halfway down the page, it shows the change in cash. There's been a little over $4 million decrease in cash during these 11 months. Is a planned decrease. If you look further back in the report, the statement of cash flows shows that there's been about $8 million spent in the current year on capital projects. So obviously that's where the cash went. And if we weren't in a period of large capital spending, chances are the current cash position would be a positive for those 11 months as opposed to the negative 4 million. So even though it's a large negative number, it is not unexpected and things are tracking as usual. Just a reminder that we usually don't present the June financials until the audit is complete. So we will be two or three, maybe four months without seeing this report in front of us. But I will continue to monitor and my staff will continue to monitor the financial situation and obviously inform you of anything that merits reporting to the board. Any changes and major fluctuations will definitely let you know. But just a reminder that this, this paper report will not be presented as you see it in this form until the audit is complete. You might have received some information correspondence from our new auditors. They seem to be doing a great job and are very thorough. So we're looking forward to working with them during this process and we will have the report back to you as soon as that process is complete. And that concludes my report and I'll answer any questions I can.
Any questions, any of you guys? Ivan?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, have we seen an uptick in any more delinquent accounts with the whole COVID situation?
We have seen an uptick, but it's not anything major. We've seen about a 8% to 10% increase in delinquencies. So yes, we are seeing an increase, but I don't think it's anything to be alarmed about. That's why I didn't include it in my report. We do see those fluctuations from season to season outside of the pandemic, the pandemic. We have seen fluctuations that large in the past. So we definitely have our eye on it. And anything of, of large variance, we'll, we'll be letting you know.
Thank you.
Matt, did anybody fit in the category of they, they should have been, they didn't pay, they were delinquent, their, their water should have been shut off, but we didn't shut it off? Is there anybody in that category?
Oh, yes, there's people in that category every month, sure.
Okay, and that, that's part of the delinquents you're talking about? They were included in your?
Correct.
Matt, okay. Because their bills are kind of compounding, you know, so. Okay, I don't see any other questions, so thank you, Matt. Public Affairs Report? Victoria, I'm assuming.
Yeah, that'll be Victoria.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. As you'll see, so if you go over to item 11 for the report, there's not much to, to report on today. The only real update is that the Senior Inspiration Awards that's put on by Riverside County Supervisor Manuel Perez is postponed until 2021. So it's not going to be rescheduled for this year, is what their office has, has mentioned. And then as you'll see, our outreach report, so you'll have Alpha Media's social management report and they help us with our social media as well as CV Water Council's outreach report and then our digital advertising report for the month of June. And so this past month, our Google Ads, which you'll see on any sort of, I guess, website that's not Facebook, we were running a Water is Safe and the Bill Assistance Program. And then on Facebook and Instagram, same thing, running the Water is Safe, the Bill Assistance, an ad regarding pictures of our staff in masks, the whole essential component. And then also a flushable wipes, one reminding people not to flush wipes and other items down into our sewer system that's not toilet paper. So I'm open to any questions if we have any. We are currently working on potential billboard designs. And then as, as we talked about yesterday at the workshop, press releases did go out. Nancy, regarding your reelection to the LAFCO's board and then there was another one, bear with me. The division map. And so for the, just a quick update on, on the districting, we are, we did put that out on our website and on Facebook on the division section and I'm working with engineering presently to get an interactive link on the webpage so that. so that customers, community members can go and type in their address and see what division they fall in. So that's being worked on as well.
Oh, good.
And open any questions if you guys have any.
Don't see any. Thank you, Victoria.
My pleasure.
Monthly reports, anybody have any comments?
Well, we we, you know, we do seem to be selling using more water up about eleven, almost twelve percent. The flows to the plant are fairly steady, which we expect. We're not adding to, you know, until we get some of the capacity there. And I believe that's the only thing that caught my eye this time. There's any questions? Please let me know, okay? Nothing more.
Question, any comments, no? I see that our gallons per day per capita when is going, went up compared to last year this time. Probably more people staying at home.
Exactly, and it's really been hot lately.
Yeah, last year.
We got close to some records here.
Okay. Upcoming events. Where are we at? Number twelve. No, wait a minute, what did I miss? Yeah, number thirteen, right? Upcoming events, yes, number thirteen. But you have any reports they want to do today? Russ and Randy, we'll start with Russ.
Good afternoon. Let's see, on the second of June, City Council Meeting, the City Council approved development of fifteen residential homes in the Eagle Point Development. It's nice to see that things are continuing along, they're not being halted by this economic crisis that they that we all find ourselves in. Some interesting developments regarding the appointment of a planning commissioner. The deadline for submitting applications was in, I believe it was the twenty, I want to say the twenty seventh of May. And or even earlier, at any rate, it's a, an appointment by councilman Betts. He asked for a delay to the following because he hadn't made a selection yet. So he delayed it one council meeting and then on the the second, he made his appointment to the Planning Commission, which for the first time since I've been attending City Council meetings and I've been attending them since two thousand and seven, for the first time, the City Council would not ratify his selection. And a number of reasons were given, I won't go into those. But to make a long story short, that occurred on the second and a planning commissioner still hasn't been been selected. It'll be by the time the the, it'll be September before the earliest selection, that will mean it took five months to select a planning commissioner, which is very, very unusual. Attended a, I say attended, you know, on Zoom, Supervisor, Riverside County Supervisor Meeting on June ninth. The issue before the the board was dealing with police oversight, use of force, community policing, crime reduction, training and education, wellness and safety, dealing with the Sheriff's Department. And this was a, they wanted to to have a oversight county Riverside, the Board of Supervisor Oversight Board formed, and this was brought to the board by Manuel Perez and the County Board of Supervisors did not support him in that movement and was voted down, feeling that the new sheriff had already conducted interviews or, or, excuse me, a review of practices that he had been very transparent and they didn't see the need for intervention by the supervisors. So that issue failed. And on June fourth, the Desert Valley Builders Association legislated morning meeting, nothing to report there. On Tuesday, June sixteenth, City Council Meeting, there was issues involving a user fees, which was tabled, RDA. The RDA approved the redevelopment agency, successor agency approved the last remaining RDA owned property in Desert Hot Springs. So there are completely devoid of ownership of any RDA owned property at its site. They, on the sixteenth of June meeting, back to the Planning Commission, they voted because of their rejection of the selection. They they want Councilman Betts to revisit the applicants who applied and met the deadline for submitting applications. The deadline for submitting applications, of course, was May twelfth and and of course, that didn't happen. Let's see. And then on the thirtieth, there was a special City Council meeting, four items were proposed. Three of them involved cannabis ordinances. Of the two of most interest were the consideration of allowing cannabis hotels and entertainment venues. Much the same as nightclubs would be for alcohol, they wanted to do the same thing for and set some guidelines for both resorts and 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 entertainment venues. There was also a review on the cannabis tax structure. That was a table till later time. I I spoke out on that issue giving my personal opinion, which has nothing to do with the Water District, but at any rate, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Russ. Randy?
One isn't listed on the agenda, but I'm going to cover it anyway.
Okay.
June second, DWA Board Meeting, did a very short meeting. They're basing they they approved the new contract for the General Manager, five oh. That was that one. June ninth, CBWD Board Meeting was also pretty quick. They are giving people, if I understood this right, they're giving people the option to transfer their late and delinquent COVID fees to the tax rolls. Put them on put on tax rolls, pay them off later, I guess. You're going to rejoin CSBA. At the end of the meeting, during board comments, Peter Nelson gave a very nice tribute to Corky Larson. He's known her for years and years, you know, as did Nancy and and I. But Peter and Nancy mainly, but he gave a very nice tribute to Corky. And then the rest of the board also said very nice things about her. June sixteen, DWA Board Meeting. One of their things was a request to establish a twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one tax rate. They're not going to change tax rates now, not in today's market with the the economy the way it is. They also voted five zero to notify the county clerk that candidates will pay their own publication things. And then they also did a moment of silence for Corky. June twenty third. They changed some personal classification. Did some budget modifications. Nothing real drastic. I just see some small small notes. It was actually a pretty quick meeting. They tend to have big agendas, but that was pretty quick. And that is the highlights of those. I mean, they're real quick and easy.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. I think Director Grasha, you have a webinar for Aqua that you attended?
I, yeah, I planned on doing that on Monday. I had some comments about those.
Sure, okay.
Things. I I do have comments during Director's comments, so I don't want to miss that.
Okay, so we'll do, you can do that other on Monday. Okay, so we have correspondence, which we all have in there. Anybody have any questions? Okay, so we'll go to District Council Comments. John, where are you? I don't see you.
I'm here.
All right.
Okay, so.
A session?
We we will on Monday, but it will be an item that's being added to the agenda for a real property, potential real property transaction. And so we will have a closed session on that. In terms of the matter that's listed on the agenda today, the next event that we have is an August fourteenth court hearing, and so there's really nothing to report today on that.
Is that? For September?
August fourteenth.
Oh, okay.
Is that, is that, is that in person?
Uh, don't know until we get closer to the date. Most likely, most likely will be attending by video, most likely.
Okay. Is that it for you? Okay, General Manager's Report.
Okay, I just wanted to reiterate what I said yesterday. I want, you know, whatever you decide is 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 fine. Every year, we consider going dark in August. And we've been stressing quite a bit to get to keep up with the COVID, so you know, if you decide to, we wouldn't, we wouldn't object, let's put it that way. The big important thing this time is that we are switching from the Cal Card to Wells One, which is a Wells Fargo commercial card. As you know, our new bank is Wells Fargo. The well, the Cal Card will be active through July and will be deactivated on August first, twenty twenty. I don't, please return your Cal Card to Dory at this time and then she'll issue you a new card. The process for submitting receipts for purchases for you with the new Well One card will be the same as before, but you might see us taking pictures, et cetera. So we're going to go through a little training program and and this basically is a little more efficient way to do it. It's easier to reconcile and it is gives us so much more information and and just is a better, a better way to handle our our cards and track them. So be ready for that, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Anything else except, you've got a written one in the agenda, so.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Then whatever I put in my written report there, we, you know, we were getting, we're moving along quite well with the meter replacement says, you know, and we're just about done, should be completed by August first. And I can't think of much more to to share with you today. If I think of something, I'll I'll bring it up.
You got Monday. Tell us on Monday.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, so Director's Comments, Randy, have any?
Yeah, real quick, couple of things. Arden, isn't your surgery August fourteenth?
Yeah, I saw that on my calendar, yeah.
Yeah, same, same as our court court day. So we'll have to, you guys have to do some coordinating there. Yeah, it's not on the agenda for discussion today, but yeah, I'd like to see the building condition of it on the agenda for discussion. And then lastly, you know what, yesterday, that was a really good meeting. Danny, Steve, Arden, everybody put on a good meeting. I didn't say thank you or recognize the staff at all for that. And apologize for that. I should have said something, but that was a very good meeting. Whoever put it together, got the illustrations and everything done. That was a great job, very informative, very well presented.
Thank you.
And that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Russ, have anything to say? No, okay, Steve? Closing comments? You had said you had some.
Yeah, am I on, okay. A couple of things. I understand there was some movement with the Desert Hot Springs City Council in in terms of a possible resolution in support of the wastewater treatment plant. As that starts to develop, I I'd like to reiterate what I was thinking yesterday in bringing Palm Springs. I think there's three votes there. I actually think it would be unanimous if we were to spend some time with the Palm Springs City Council. I know Victoria might excel in putting that together in terms of the maybe starting off a conversation with Christie, Councilwoman Holstegate and maybe bringing the council on in support of that as well. I understand counsel to say that there might be a change in the agenda. I'd like to add to next Monday's agenda, a discussion item for renaming of the wastewater treatment plant. And I've been involved in this activity before at another agency. I know it can be an explosive subject, but ah, here I don't see it as being a controversial subject and because it makes sense to me that anytime somebody has served the length of time that Nancy Wright has served on this board, that nobody will ever hold that torch in her place. And I would suggest that perhaps we put an item on the agenda that we could name the plant after Nancy Wright. You can put together ideas and if you're not in support of it, I get that as well. But I'd like to put that on Monday's agenda.
Um, okay, um, well, thanks, Steve.
A conflict, you're not, you're not even allowed to talk about it. It's going to.
Russ, Russ has said that many times throughout the years.
I never heard it brought up.
Are you having the poop?
My exact words, I think my exact words was.
I got more votes than you, so I get.
I think my exact words were naming it the Nancy Wright Cook Plant.
So.
I think, I think, I don't think Monday, though, I don't think if we do it on Monday, the plant hasn't even had a shovel turned yet, but.
I want this done before we get the shovel spray paint out on the on the gold shovels. And I would like that when, if we decide that we're going to make approach Palm Springs, I would like the public discussion to include any potential name change before we start rolling this out publicly so that if things are mentioned in the newspaper that the new name will be part of the public discussion as opposed to whatever alphabet soup you're calling it. Now, I bet you not a single person on this screen can recite the name of that plant right now. Okay, two, two of you can't, I can't do it and I don't want to try.
Springs Water District, I don't know. Treatment facility wastewater, I don't know. As Randy always called it, the alphabet soup. But, okay, well, it's a, it's a conversation we should probably have, but I I don't think we need to have it on Monday, Steve. So, but we we could, we should have it at some point in time. It looks like things aren't going to happen real fast anyway, at least the next couple of months. Okay, Ivan? Comments?
Mission Springs Water District Water, West Valley Water Reclamation Facility. See, I can't even do it. No further comments, but I'm open to any name suggestions. I'm open to anything.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, start thinking about them, guys, and we'll discuss it eventually. It's, okay, so, did I get you all? I think I got you all. Okay, so Arden mentioned going dark in August. I I think that we've done it before, not, I don't know if we did both meetings, but we've done a lot of times because the urban water, I think it was, was usually about that time in August. And so some of you guys went to that and we didn't have a quorum, so we would not do a study session, but would see what's going on and whatnot. If there's nothing on the agenda, Arden, that you know, that you need a meeting for, I I don't have any problems with going dark in August.
That's why I brought it up is that we're, you know, we're just, we really, we discussed it, the executive committee discussed it. Really don't have anything pressing right now and we need to catch up with some things. We really don't have anything pressing right now, and we need to catch up with some things. So if, and, you know, this is the only time during the year that we ever have a low point, and most other agencies also dark during.
Yeah, the regional board's going dark, the city usually always goes dark in August. LAFCO, we got a meeting at the end of August, but anyway. Okay, well, I, does anybody have any comments on that, a or n or? Okay. Okay, well, hearing none, then you know what, Arden? If it works out, go ahead and, and plan to not have an August board meeting or study session.
Thank you.
You know, if you need a workshop or something, or a special meeting, just let us know.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, and also, I just wanted to bring up again that when we were going to the court hearings, when they were being, when they were happening last year, I guess it was, Russ and I were the two that went to those, we were kind of like the ad hoc committee that were going to the, the court hearings. So I'd like to keep that going, Russ, if that's okay with you. Okay, I've got it on my calendar. And so Russ and I will be the representatives from the district. Anybody can go, I'm not saying people can't go, but just that we are, will be like the ad hoc.
What's the date, what's the date of the next meeting, or the next court hearing?
August 14th. We've all, we have been since the start, so I decided to keep this there.
The day of my operation.
I know.
I doubt if I'm going to make it. I may have a walker that day.
Yeah, really, don't worry about it, I think they, they think they can handle it without you, Arden. Okay, so we aren't having a closed session today, we'll have one on Monday. So anything else, if nobody has anything else to say, I will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, have a good weekend, I'll see you on Monday.